All right, it being seven o'clock, I'll call to order the meeting of the Acton Board of Selectmen for Monday, November 19, 2016. And the first item on the agenda has always been citizens' concerns about issues that individual citizens want to bring up that might not be on the agenda to be addressed later this evening. So are there any citizens who want to come forward with concerns? And seeing none, we'll move on to the chairman's update. I just came from a meeting of the town's Green Advisory Board. Earlier in the year, we had expanded the Green Advisory Board's charge from the Board of Selectmen. Originally, they were created as part of the state's Green Communities Act to take advantage of funding from the state to help reduce electricity and use in town buildings, which they've been somewhat successful at, particularly in the schools. And the town has changed all its streetlights to save a lot of electricity to LED bulbs. We expanded their charge to address broader issues of environmental concern other than just electricity. And recently, the Citizens Group, Environmental Group in Town, Green Acton, has approached us about reducing natural gas use, which results in leaks of methane into the atmosphere, which is extremely damaging to the carbon emissions and global warming. So those two groups, Jim Snyder-Grant from Green Acton was at the Green Advisory Board meeting tonight. They are going to be working on a carbon reduction plan for the town with specific target goals set in the future. It turns out, the Selectmen had actually adopted a resolution back in 2009 committing to a carbon reduction plan. I'm not sure we ever implemented that, but we will be proceeding with that. And moving forward on things like promoting more electric vehicle use in town, installing charging stations at various public parking places around town, including the train station, possibly purchasing more electric vehicles. The town has made a major commitment to mass transportation. They upgraded the Fitchburg Line, has increased ridership, and therefore reduced the number of cars that are on the road. The town meeting has made substantial financial commitments to more transportation townwide, which also reduces use of cars on the road. We're working on our complete streets policy, which will encourage more walking, bicycling, other alternatives to car use. So the town is making a major commitment to the reduction of greenhouse gases and addressing all the environmental issues across the board. The school committee, Regional School District Committee, has created a master plan review committee. I will be a member of that, along with members of the school committee, teachers, parents of students, and other citizens. And they will be proceeding to explore what the state school building authority, the possibility of funding for new school construction. The elementary schools in town, all three, Conant, Douglas, and Gates, are 50 years old and deteriorating. So that committee will be working along with the town and schools' capital planning committees to address significant infrastructure needs, particularly in town and school buildings that we're facing over the long term. So other than that, I will turn it over to the town manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Thursday, or week ago Thursday, I guess it was, ALG met, no, it was last Thursday, sorry. The ALG met. Really not too much to report. Everything was kind of put on hold until my recommended budget and the superintendent's recommended budget numbers were, will be plugged in the spreadsheet. So it's pretty much all we talked about. Also did a little kind of recap of the tri-board meeting. That same evening, the capital improvement planning committee met, primarily met to listen to the presentation of the school potential capital needs and listened to the consultant report, which consisted of a whole bunch of scenarios, I think ranging anywhere from $200 million up to $280 million. And a lot of it's going to relate to timing, the ability to get SBAB and things like that. So there's going to be a lot of money and a lot of work associated with that, as Peter was talking about with his role. This past, gee, I lose track of time, I'm really sorry. I think it was last Tuesday. We brought together the Health Insurance Working Group, which are representatives of the leadership of all the town unions and the school unions, along with Marie Altieri from the schools and Jody, I forget Jody's last name, who's their benefits person, myself and Mary Ann Fleckner. You know, we put around this group together four years ago when Chapter 69 became a reality to see if there were ways we could actuate some health insurance savings. And four years ago, we made some changes to our plans and were able to come up with some significant health insurance savings. Now, with the potential of the so-called Cadillac tax with the ACA and things like that, although nobody knows really what's going to happen with the Affordable Care Act after the new president takes place, we thought we should talk with the unions, talk about different options we might look at that could be somewhat different, or actually radically different than what they're accustomed to. Things like health savings accounts, which in essence would mean we would have a high deductible plan for health insurance, but there'd be a health savings account that would, each employee would have that would offset those deductibles in order to lower premiums and things like that. So the first meeting was really just an education with a bunch of different options. That also, we had reps from both Blue Cross and Harvard Pilgrim to talk about some of the options. We're going to meet again end of January, I think the 31st, to start talking about maybe more specifics as to options and see if there's ways we could save some health insurance. Now, we have a 5% increase in health insurance placed in the budget that you'll be hearing about in a little while, but nonetheless, you know, we feel that we still ought to look for maybe new and better ways to handle our health insurance. So that will be a work in progress. And I guess that's all I have.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of the installation of solar carports at South Acton Train Station. We have backup materials, a letter from South Acton's Train Station Advisory Committee, a letter from the Historic District Commission, a letter from the Green Advisory Board. For people who aren't familiar, the town engineer, Corey York, was out at the Railroad Street parking lot, which is a smaller parking lot off of Central Street. That property is actually owned by the MBTA, and the town leases it for a dollar for parking for the train station, a dollar a year from the MBTA. There was a contractor out there who was evaluating the site for installation of solar panels on Railroad Street. Apparently, I don't know whether it was the MBTA Finance Board or the MBTA itself, has made a determination that they can have, generate income from leasing property for installation of solar panels. So he was looking at that site. He also talked to the town engineer about possibly installing solar panels on the larger parking lot off of Central Street. Railroad Street is off of Main Street. I may have said Central, but obviously, the main parking lot is off Central. The town actually owns that property, so we control it. And there were some incentives that this particular contractor talked to Corey York about, such as completing work that needs to be done to upgrade the main parking lot, installing new lights as part of the solar array. The lights there need to be replaced. They don't meet the town's lighting bylaw. So that's kind of the background of where we are. It might be appropriate to open this up to the public discussion before the board has a discussion about this. Is that okay? So let me ask any citizens who want to address this issue to come forward and speak.
Hi, I'm David Martin. I'm chair of SATSAC. It's basically what you said, Mr. Chair. SATSAC voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen oppose and work with the MBTA to not have a solar array in the Railroad Street area. We thought that the solar array would just completely dominate the aesthetics of the area. Because the solar array needs to be high enough that vehicles can get under, it would be as tall as some of the utility poles that are in the area and up to the bottom of the first floor of the old post office building, or if you shot a line across, up to the bottom of Jones Tavern. So it'd be a pretty tall and dominant structure. And for that, we thought that the return on investment there would be quite small because it's a relatively small parking lot and wouldn't generate that much electricity for the MBTA. On the other hand, we thought that putting a solar array on top of the main parking lot might be something that the Board of Selectmen might want to consider. The, it's a, as you mentioned, there are a number of areas where if the solar array was built, that the town would save some money initially, like repaving the lot would be included as part of the cost of putting in the array and replacing the lighting. So we thought that this deserves further investigation. Also, the electricity that's generated might have a couple of good purposes. First of all, one purpose might be to somehow possibly increase the lease fees on the Railroad Street lot or through some other mechanism, encourage the MBTA not to put the solar array over Railroad Street. And second is that the monies could be used to maintain and otherwise enhance the parking in the area of the train station and other expenses that are currently served by the revolving fund or whatever the board wants to do with the extra electricity, offset the electricity use in other town buildings, you know, whatever makes sense. We do think that if that's the case, it needs significant further investigation. You know, there are many open questions. But from SATSAC's point of view, we felt that, again, we would encourage the board to oppose an array over the Railroad Street lot, but if the board thought it was a good idea to look into a solar array over the main parking lot.
Thank you. Other comments?
David Hahn, I'm here as the HDC chair. You received the letter, apparently. So it's all self-explanatory, and we're in complete agreement with SATSAC about this. I'll just remind everyone, as I did in the letter, that, you know, getting the T to redesign that station was a multi-year battle by our committee and dozens and dozens, even hundreds of people, lobbying to not put a structure anywhere near Jones Tavern or down by the bridge there. Because in addition to Jones Tavern, which is on the National Register, there's also Ironwork Farm, which has already been compromised by the housing across the street, and then there's Exchange Hall. So all those, three of the most important properties in South Acton. So, you know, we fought very hard to not have a structure anywhere near there, and we managed to push it down and shrink it and change it dramatically. So as I said in the letter, we'd, you know, we'd fight till hell freezes over, till we put anything in the Railroad Street lot. We do think, just speaking for the committee and also as a South Acton resident, I think the main lot is a good spot for these solar arrays. And I think it'd make a lot of sense, as you know, topography-wise, it's kind of in a bowl, which is a good thing in terms of not dominating the other things around it. So we'd be in favor of that. I do want to say that I think the Board of Selectmen ought to send a clear message to the T and not a mixed message. You probably saw Green Acton Advisory Board said Railroad Street lot, you don't have anything else to say because it's state-owned and MBTA-owned. And of course, we don't agree with that position. Also, I think in that Green Acton letter, or Green Advisory Board, it said that the town is already getting all its buildings serviced by the trash, solar collector at the trash station. So I think it'd be a very interesting thing if the South Acton residents could buy their electricity locally if there was an array there. And we would, you know, I'm putting in a word for first dibs on South Acton residents possibly, you know, getting in line for that, assuming the rates were advantageous. So that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, Claire Siska, 14 Stowe Street, local, live around the area. I guess, I mean, I would agree with those guys about Railroad Street. I was one of the people, as you guys know, that I fought about the train station. I have a question about, well, about the main parking lot. When the T built the structure, they made the bridge so that if a parking lot or a raised parking structure were to be reconsidered in the future, that you could sort of pop the end of that bridge off and make that bridge go into the parking structure. And so I don't have a position yet, but it seems like if we put the solar array in, that we should probably reopen the consideration about whether or not you would want to put a parking structure there, because there's a lot of concern about parking. And if you put the solar array, then there's no opportunity in the future to put parking there, but maybe you combine, I know it's a multimillion dolly project, but maybe if you're going to commit to the solar, maybe you should just put a parking lot there and then put solar on top of the parking. So that's one thought. But the other thing I was just confused about, if the MBTA brought this to our attention, since we own the main parking lot, what does the MBTA have to do with putting solar arrays on ours? Or was it, did it just kind of evolve in that direction?
The MBTA has not brought it to our attention, as far as I'm aware. It was some contractor who was out there-
Oh, okay.
-who was evaluating a proposal that the MBTA put together. But as far as I'm aware, the town hasn't received any formal notice from the T.
No.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood.
No, we'd gotten an email from the vendor. And at first, I thought he was confused because, you know, he was talking about the parking lot, and I said, "Well, it's our parking lot. It's not the T's parking lot." But apparently, the T's got grants with a lot of money, so they would apply it to the town lot as well as their own.
Okay.
Yeah, the town parking lot, we completely control. We own the property. We would be just talking about putting out a proposal for, and we couldn't hire this particular vendor, but you'd have to go through the whole bid process. But put together, obviously, a complete proposal that would talk about design and all that.
Okay. I misunderstood. Thank you.
And go through bid, yeah.
Yeah. I think that I'm inclined, I don't know a whole lot about the parking situation at South Acton Train Station. I hear about it. But I tend to agree, given that we have South Acton Train Station Committee and HDC representatives weighing in in the same way about focusing on the main parking lot and trying to discourage the MBTA, if in fact, this is their plan to solar panel the Railroad Street lot, to sort of persuade them not to do that, and maybe, as David Martin said, maybe try to sweeten it by figuring out a way to give them the benefit of the power from the main parking lot, which they don't control. We obviously need to sort of flesh out what this plan is, given that we haven't gotten official notice. But that would be my thought. And if there are other things to explore, such as the possibility of any extra power generating being available for residents in South Acton, I'd be open to that. But it certainly seems as if there are aesthetic and mostly aesthetic reasons for not cluttering up the Railroad Street lot with solar arrays, especially since it's so small, so.
Franny.
When I first read it, and I read the Green Advisory Board letter, I thought, "Oh, good idea." And in general, I don't worry about the views from things, because otherwise, the views are of modern cars. I mean, I don't worry if we're looking at other things. But I am convinced that it is pretty tall for that small lot, and the resulting savings of energy wouldn't be that big for that small lot. So I would be inclined to agree with those suggestions, to not say yes to a Railroad Street, but to look into the other. But my concerns about a full train station array are the same about future development of the train station, not necessarily for parking, but for other things, if we wanted to put anything else over the lot. When it comes to parking, I'd rather focus on feeder service to the station and the upcoming driverless cars. I think we're going to find within five to 20 years that we don't need all that parking. I also would like, if we do put in solar arrays, to make sure they add to a comfort station, including warmth, coffee, and bathrooms. I think all those things are needed at South Acton Station. And so I want to see that we do that. But I like the idea of taking advantage of solar energy, and I would like to see us look into it.
Katie.
Thank you. So the Historical Commission, the liaison too, has meant a number of times and spoken about this as well, and they agree with the Historic District Commission and SATSAC that they're opposed to the solar array on the Railroad Street lot for the reasons that both of the Davids laid out tonight and in their letters, and would be open to the solar array on the main lot. I agree with that. My understanding from the correspondence I've seen with Corey York is that the Railroad Street lot has sort of been pushed down on the list of the MBTA's priorities in terms of which solar projects they're looking at. So our understanding was it's on hold for now. But I think that it's worth us directing the town manager and the town engineer to engage with the MBTA, as they have not chosen to engage with us so far, and indicate that our preference would be not to have an array here. Our concerns, the concerns with the impacts on the National Register buildings, and that that would have to go through the Mass Historical Commission review process, similarly to what the station had to do, in that we would be open to discussing, you know, potential considerations or to, you know, offset some of the loss of revenue there if we were to build a solar array on our own lot. I think there's a lot of benefits to it, and I don't think there's a lot of downsides to doing it on the main lot. So I'm hoping that's what we'll do tonight.
So in general, I agree with what everyone else has said. I do have some clarification questions, though. The first is that the proposed Railroad Street lot is part of sort of a large collection of solar arrays that the MBTA is proposing to build. And as Katie said, it's apparently being pushed down. I was wondering if we were to build, or if we were to propose building a solar array on the main lot in lieu of the Railroad Street lot, would we have any chance of capturing funding from the MBTA? Or would that be exclusively something that would be, or would there be some other backend negotiation on how that works economically?
I don't think we have enough information about that at all.
But also, in building solar arrays, usually, I mean, the town wouldn't pay to actually build the solar array.
Right, right.
We wouldn't have to pay for it, so there wouldn't be any upfront costs for us. In fact, it would save us money in terms of repaving the lot and redoing the lighting and other issues.
I'm not familiar with how exactly the town would go about building this. I just assumed we would, like most other people, pay upfront to. Okay. All right. Well, that's good.
No, I'd actually like to follow up on that question a little bit, because this whole question about who gets the electricity is extremely confusing. And I don't think that the owners of property actually pay to build these solar arrays. I think that the contractor builds a solar array. This contractor was telling Corey York that the town could have the credits from the MBTA site. And we could get the credits from the Railroad Street site also. Somehow, the contractor still makes money without actually selling the credits and paying for the whole construction. I'm not sure how that works. I mean, maybe Steve has more insight based on the town's experience. The other question I have is, I don't think this electricity goes to the neighbors. You can't-
No, it doesn't.
The electricity goes to the utility companies. The town gives the electricity from the solar array on the transfer station site to the electrical generating utilities. We then get credits on our electric bill back from those utilities. Now, there are these things called community solar arrays. I don't know much about them. I think a neighborhood can build a solar array and maybe get that electricity itself, but I don't think so. I think the credits go, again-
I mean, I think it depends on the-
Even if you build it on your own house, the credits go to the utility companies, don't they?
Yeah. It depends on the structure, though. I mean, like, at the transfer station, that's what's called a power purchase agreement. So we lease that space to a company that, in essence, sells that generation to the utilities. In exchange, we get a lease, and the state gives out credits, which you can apply to certain accounts. So that's a little different than, you know, I don't know what the structure is of how it's being suggested for the T lots. And the fact that the contractor is offering us metering credits, I'm not sure how the T would feel about that. But usually, you have to apply those metering credits to one of your accounts, one of your meters. So I'm not really sure what that contractor's talking about. We need more information.
And there's also a couple kinds of credits. So there's the S-Rex, which is usually what sort of you give to the contractor when they build it. They get the S-Rex, which they sell in this like national, or at least regional, sort of consortium or whatever. And then we would get the power credit. So you're right. It's not as a, we get the power that we're using to turn on these lights. It's just kind of a credit on your bill. But there is the option now, and it's fairly new, because it was a change in state law, to allow for community solar gardens. So there's- So, there's, it could potentially and is worth exploring whether you could do that through this kind of agreement, but it's something we've talked about. The Main Street property, it's definitely an option on town-owned property, but it's not, it wouldn't cost the town anything to build it. I don't know about the, I'd be intrigued if the MBTA is willing to give us their, you know, S-Rex or their energy credits from the railroad lot.
So, we're talking, so we're all talking about PPAs for these arrays and not actually owning them?
We don't know, they don't, they haven't, we don't, MBTA isn't engaged with us.
If we were to build an array.
No, there's a couple of ways that you can go about it.
Well, I know there's a number of ways you can go about it, but if, like, so we're not actually going to own the actual array itself, though?
Usually you don't.
In, under any of these conditions?
Usually, no, yeah.
Okay, so we would be operating under a situation where someone else owns the array and we're buying the power in some way, shape, or form, as opposed to actually owning the entire array?
We're not buying the power, yeah.
Well, you're buying, through something like a PPA or something like that, you are effectively buying the power that's produced by the array, but I would just want to confirm that we're not thinking about building a solar array on the main parking lot which we own the entire array for?
Probably not.
Okay, all right.
All right, well, yeah, I mean, probably not, but we haven't put any proposal together. I mean, what we would do would be direct the staff to come up with some proposal and suppose it could be a range of options about how it's operated or who owns it. I mean, I will point out that the Green Advisory Board, they're, of course, their responsibility is to reduce carbon emissions and greenhouse gas and work on improving the environment in the town. Wrote a letter supporting both the array on the railroad street property and the town-owned main parking lot. They don't have any perspective on the historic impact on the historic district. I'm not hearing any sentiment on the board so far that, I mean, the sentiment I'm hearing is we should support not building the array on railroad street because of the impact on the historic district. Is that okay? And so then, I think the question, and also support building and, or at least exploring building an array on the main parking lot, so then the question is, how do we go about achieving those goals?
But I do have concerns about future development of the lot. I wouldn't want to preclude that. I would want to look at that before we put solar arrays that might cause us to say, we can't do that anymore, because it's such a perfect place for transit-oriented development and being owned by the town, it's a great opportunity.
I'd recommend that we make a motion or we direct the town manager and the town engineer to engage with the MBTA, express our concerns with building a solar array on the railroad street lot and our openness to building an array on the main lot and go from there and discuss that with them. That, I'll tell you, Franny, these are also temporary, I mean, they have a lifespan of like 20 or 30 years, I think, so it's also not a permanent structure that would be there, and I'm not sure what else we're building above the parking lot in the next 20 to 30 years.
If that was a motion, I second it. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't think that we're in a position to decide anything other than to recommend that the town manager pursue further discussion, given that we're kind of backing into this because of this contractor who happened to be on site, right? Nobody's formally notified of this, so it would behoove us to get more information and then, and have everybody involved consider all of these issues that people have raised about, well, potential future structure and the need to consider whether the arrays would interfere with that or not, you know, or, so, yeah.
Okay, did that include asking the town to move forward on coming up with some proposal to build it?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth looking, you know, yeah, looking into, so taking those next steps.
Okay, I had not heard that the T was kind of moving this out into the future for railroad street. I was considering upping the ante a little bit and contacted Jamie's office, who has been our rep that's dealt directly with the MBTA about the station and a lot of the issues in the Fitchburg line, and seeing if he could arrange a meeting with the T to explore the issues and maybe with the selectmen as well as town staff, but I, given that it's not going to happen very quickly anyway, maybe we start with the town staff trying to reach out to the T and then see how that goes, and if that doesn't work, we can try to, you know, engage our representatives to help us out. Okay. I mean, was that a motion or do you got, you got the sense of what we want to do? Steve, are you clear on how we should approach this? Okay, what I'm hearing is we're asking staff to put together some ideas, proposals, schematics, whatever, about building an array on the main town parking lot and reach out to the MBTA to talk to them about the railroad street lot with the idea that the town doesn't want that to happen and the possibility that we might be able to talk to them about somehow a deal that includes them in the main street parking lot, in the main parking lot that offsets their loss from the railroad lot.
I would, before I want to actually make the decision, I want to put solar arrays on top of that lot, I would love to see an alternatives analysis of what could be done with that lot, because if there are other things, including parking or structure, I would like to know about it at the same time as deciding to put solar arrays. I don't think I want to make a 20-year solar arrays in the parking lot decision without knowing what those other options are in a rough way.
Yeah, the issue of a second deck for parking was raised during the train station process. As Claire pointed out, the T did design the new station so that if we were to build a second deck over the parking lot on Central Street, it could connect to the bridge that goes across the tracks. There was significant neighborhood opposition to a second deck at that point, and there were all kinds of traffic issues and whatnot, you know, so, I mean, other comments on Franny's point of view?
I don't think we're making a final decision at this point. I also think it's worth just exploring this. Personally, I'm not in favor of a parking deck there and I'm not sure what other issues or what other options there would be above the parking lot, so I'm in favor of pursuing as a next step, looking into what building a solar array would be there.
So, I think it might be, make sense before you approach the T to ask Corey just to do a, you know, there are other examples around the Lincoln Sudbury High School, there are other places where these solar arrays have been built, to look at those, maybe figure out what could be done on the main lot and at least get us some general ideas about what the possibilities are. Does that, people agree with that? I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was just, the whole point was to authorize the town manager and the town engineer to explore all of these things. I mean, I think we're not committed to doing anything if it's not feasible, but, you know, obviously, this focus on the railroad street lot has generated a lot of discussion about the possibility for the main lot, main, and, you know, and all these other issues that are coming up, so I think we need to get, well, I think it's good for us to anticipate that this might come up, so why not deal with it now and deal with all the other issues, the possibility of a multi-tiered parking, you know, a second parking deck and all that and sort of deal with it all at once, but first, probably just, I don't know how we do it, though. Do we do outreach to the T? Do we do all this little prep work beforehand, touring other sites? It just, it would be interesting to me to see what exactly the T is doing. I assume that they've also been looking at different arrays and they might have information that would be useful. I mean, it just, yeah, Lincoln Sudbury, I know REI and Framingham or whatever NADIC has for a while, for a few years, they've had the solar arrays over their parking area, which is great when it's hot as hell and, you know, and you drive a black car that just has a heater in the summer, so.
I just remember seeing a presentation from a developer, I can't remember if it was Canton, somewhere down there where they had built housing, which didn't need much parking because it was right at a parking, right at a train station, and they found that they didn't need the parking that they thought they did because people lived there that didn't, and when we are so below our affordable housing effort, I just don't want to close our minds to that. I'd like to at least hear about whether that's feasible. I've never heard it looked at.
Okay, I mean, the selectmen will decide whether, you know, any proposal goes forward eventually. I guess from listening to Janet, it does make sense to reach out to the T because as part of this whole proposal to build something on the main lot, we should know whether the T's, what their plans are for railroad street and whether they'd be willing to reconsider if we could do a joint venture on the main lot that would get them the same revenue that they're trying to get out of railroad street, so is that, that give you enough direction? Okay.
So, do we need to be a vote or, because, no, just, okay, just guidance, okay.
Okay, moving on. 7:30, the budget presentation.
I bruised some ribs this weekend, so if you hear me moaning and groaning, if I move, it's not necessarily a reflection on the budget or anything, it is just kind of hurting right now. On any rate, this is the presentation of the proposed FY18 budget. Everybody knows I always like quotes, and I thought it was appropriate on a couple fronts this year, since Bob Dylan has just been named a Nobel Laureate, and my mother would just totally cringe now because she really hated him when I listened to his music, and, but Steve Barrett would like to get his hair cut like that, so. But, you know, I was thinking a lot about change and reflecting on change, and I found this quote because I thought it was kind of interesting, that there is nothing so stable as change because things are always changing, so I guess there's some stability in the fact that change is constant. This will be the 40th budget I've worked on in my career, and, you know, it's just really amazing how much has changed in the span of those years. I mean, obviously, technology is a big issue. I mean, I, when I first started out, you know, we were using computers and data processing that would fill half this room, and now, you know, the average PC is probably more powerful than that, and, you know, nobody anticipated 40 years ago, you know, texting, emails, all that kind of stuff certainly made service delivery and things like that easier, but it also has created a lot of expectations for instantaneous answers. You know, we've seen environmental consciousness change a lot in the course of those years and the importance of preservation of open spaces, something, you know, 30, 40 years ago, people didn't really think about too much, you know, everybody thought development was good for development's sake, and now we do recognize the value of keeping some of the resources in town that everybody has held dear for a long time, and, you know, then there's other things that are really have been negative, I mean, violence, domestic violence, terrorism, opioid abuse, all these type of things nobody would have thought about 30 years ago. So, you know, change is something that, once again, is constant, and, you know, it really has been constant here in the town of Acton. When I started nine years ago, which will be nine years ago this coming February, we only have nine of the 23 folks that sit around the table at our weekly staff meetings that still remain from almost nine years ago, and in one short month, the police chief will be retiring, so that'll make that eighth, so eight, only eight remaining from that point in time, so, you know, clearly, been a lot of changes and more changes will be happening in the future. This current fiscal year, the fiscal year we're in right now, I think we've seen a lot of success. One, we have instituted some long-range capital planning through the Capital Planning Improvement Committee. We've commenced the process of electric aggregation for the town, which hopefully we will be making that available to our residents sometime in early spring. At our next meeting, we will be in executive session with our consultant on that. We've provided additional tax relief for our seniors. We've entered into a lease for our new senior center. We're moved towards implementation of advanced life support in the fire department. We've hired our first land use and economic development director. We've done some tax incentives for some local businesses. We've maintained our AAA bond rating. We've implemented our complete street program. Continued our rail trail construction, continued our award-winning transportation programs, and we've installed new parking meters at the train station and created the function of a recreation office manager to help with recreation since that's a very rapidly growing operation. So, as usual, we start our budget kind of late summer and requests are turned in mid-September and we hold our two-day budget retreat. This year would happen to be October 11th and 12th, where all the departments present their requested budgets to the town. The budget request that we received totaled an amount of $33,200,000, and capital and personal requests amounted to another $16 million. As we go through the process, at the end, we have some secret ballot voting, making the capital and personal requests in A and B categories, A being the highest, and those items that made it through to A were actually almost $6 million. So, and obviously, we can't necessarily afford to do all the things that make it as A's, so it's one of the reasons I convene what we call the Budget Book Working Group, which we've been doing for a long time now, and that consists of the finance director, the town accountant, the assistant finance director, the assistant town manager, the human resource director, and we've had the police chief the last couple of years since he's almost worked on as many budgets as me over the years, so he's got a lot of expertise. So, once we go through that and we will meet diligently every Thursday through the fall, except for Thanksgiving, and the budget you're about to have presented is the result of that. So, whoops, oh, sorry. So, the budget that we're presenting this evening, the operational budget is up 3.63% from FY17. Subsidies, which are general fund, funds that help offset some cost enterprise funds, are up about $190,000 primarily, and we'll get into this in a little bit, is because of a needed subsidy in the ambulance enterprise funds. OPEB is up 3.3. The $20,000 is just the reflection of two new positions that are being recommended in the budget, and as you may recall, we place an OPEB factor in the budget for any new positions, and capital is up about $120,000. So, the total budget for the town, both capital subsidies as well as operational, my recommended budget is up 4.53%. Now, the budget, excuse me, this thing's kind of sticking on me. The budget features, once again, continued contribution to OPEB, continuation of the senior tax relief, implementation of the selectmen's goals. One item is purchase of 516 Massachusetts Avenue, which is kind of across from the new Rosenfeld development, next to the kind of the gray condos on the other side from Gardner Playground, and the owner would sell it to us only if we would do parking. Also features a bike lane rail trail study, an intersection study at Prospect and Main Streets, replacement of a dump truck for natural resources, replacement of replacement of a dump truck for natural resources, replacement of Fire Engine 23, which is on the long-range fire capital plan. So, whoops. Okay. HVAC improvements for all three fire stations, replacement of a portion of the Memorial Library roof and their cooling system, purchase of utility terrain vehicle for emergency response on the rail trails, and creation of a crafts person position. And the crafts person position, in essence, would be somebody with some skills that can do carpentry and some other repairs where, right now, we farm that out, and through our analysis, we feel that the crafts person could more than pay for its, pay for itself. So, a couple of the pressures in the budget are the fact that we have some fixed costs we've inherited. One is the senior center lease, which between the lease itself and the utility cost is going to be about $252,000. The ambulance subsidy is $200,000. So, if you kind of took those two things and peel them out of, out of the recommended budget, what we would get would be, whoops, pi, 3.14. I'm sorry, I couldn't resist this slide. Mr. Barrett advised me against it, but I did not, but I did not heed his advice, obviously. So, just, and you've seen these slides before, but just to give a sense, our revenue primarily is from the property tax, 89%, and a little excise tax of 3.6, local receipts of 1.7, state aid at 2.8, and our historic reserve use is about 2.8. Is a question for, oh, you know what happened, is that the state aid, I think we just changed the 2.8, but not the, that, we're working off a slide that included Chapter 70 from the schools before, so that was a higher slice. We just changed the percent, not the size of the slice. So, I think that's probably what happened. So, our functional areas, biggest cost area is in finance, and one of the main reasons is the fact that health insurance and all the other town insurances are in that, in that sector, property casualty, workers' comp, plus, plus health insurance, retirement assessment, et cetera. Police, fire, and dispatch, obviously, are second biggest. So, this doesn't change too terribly much from, from year to year. This is by object. As you can see, personal services are our highest number. Other appropriation at 26% does include health insurance and other benefits. So, those are our two primary driving factors. Whoops, sorry. So, these are some of the recommended capital that has been included in the operational budget. One is the purchase of 516 Mass Ave. Once again, it's to add probably around 15 parking spaces in West Acton, a utility terrain vehicle for the, for emergency issues on the rail trail, and the bike lane rail trail study, natural resources, dump truck at $56,000, intersection study at Prospect and Main, and then we are suggesting some bonding where the FY18 bonding cost would be $70,000, so the total would be $286,000 on these general fund capital. So, this is what a utility terrain vehicle would be, something the fire department would have. They can, they can actually have a gurney where if somebody gets hurt, they can carry them off the rail trail, also has some firefighting pumping capability. Been one of the concerns since the rail trails have been suggested, or what do we do in emergency situations. Intersection of Prospect and Main, I think anybody that goes through there knows it's very confusing. I'm not sure this pointer is working, but, you know, Prospect kind of comes up from, from 111, and then it also comes up from Central Street, and there's one, two, three, four potential conflicts as traffic goes through there. So, it's been a high problem area for the town, so we do have a proposal to re-engineer that and come up with a different solution. In terms of the borrowing, we're suggesting for Million Two, the Acton Memorial Library roof and up repairing the HVAC system. Now, the roof is something you really can't see, actually, you kind of see it from this window if it was lighter, is that it's a flat roof that's kind of in between the peaks. The library's had a lot of leaks, especially in the, in the early spring when the snow is melting, and there's a lot of buckets throughout all the, all the stacks of books, so that's something that's probably been overdue for some time. Engine 23 in the fire department is, is one that's been on the list to be replaced. It's fully equipped, meaning it's just not the fire truck, it's what are all the other equipment, evacuation tools, et cetera, that go with it. And finally, we are proposing some HVAC improvements at the three fire stations, primarily what we call mini splits, the kind of wall units that kind of do heating and AC. They can be portable so that if, in fact, once we resolve the North Acton Station, and if it's determined we're going to give one of the current stations up, they could be used and moved. So, we would propose bonding these at $2,150,000, and the first year's interest is $70,000. So, this just gives you a sense, and this is something the Capital Planning Committee is working on as well, is that we are dramatically seeing a reduction in our debt. The blue being what has been excluded under Proposition 2.5, and the red, the debt we've absorbed under 2.5. So, as you can see, by FY23, pretty much the excluded debt is virtually gone. So, as we look at long-term capital planning and borrowing, you know, in many ways, it's a good time to start thinking about these things. We also have capital in other enterprise funds. For advanced life support in the ambulance enterprise fund, we have $207,000. This is pretty much for equipment, materials, drugs, et cetera, to get the ALS up and running. You may recall when we brought the fire contract to town meeting in the fall, one of the features of the fire contract was to create an advanced life support coordinator, a position that would monitor ALS, be responsible for purchasing goods and services, making sure everybody keeps up with their certifications, et cetera, and that would also entail a vehicle at $40,000, although it's been coming up from the ambulance enterprise fund. And then we have a replacement vehicle for land use at $32,000 coming out of the Septage Enterprise Fund at $368,000. As we talked about, there's two sources of subsidies to our enterprise fund, the ambulance enterprise. Last year, we did not have any subsidy to ambulance, and the main reason we are proposing it this year is FY16, for whatever reason, we had a real downturn in revenue. It's better this year, but it did impact kind of our bottom line in the enterprise fund, and also, we did buy some equipment out of it, so it was kind of a double whammy that year. So, we're proposing $200,000 to make it a little more stable and help ALS get up and running the way we want to see it. And transportation actually is down a little bit from, from the prior year, but I think as we all recognize, transportation can never really be self-supporting. It does need some assistance from, from the general fund. So, the total subsidy is $431,000. Whoops. OPEB, obviously, another big factor. If we keep placing OPEB at $600,000, at $620,000, every year, you can see our unfunded liability goes down to virtually nothing in 2035. Now, you'll notice, this is the results as of December 31st of 2014. These valuations are done every two years, so there will be a valuation done at the end of this fiscal year, or this calendar year, Steve. Is it calendar or fiscal? I forget. Calendar, yeah. So, at the end, and after the end of this month, there will be, there'll be this valuation, so we'll see how we're doing. But, you know, we've been pretty successful, so I'm assuming this curve is going to stay pretty much the same. Obviously, personnel costs are a major factor in our union, and this is the first time, I think, in a lot of folks' memories, that we have actually had all five of our contracts settled. So, for four of our contracts, Patrol, Superior's Dispatch, and AFSMI, which is Highway Municipal Property and Cemetery, those contracts are all locked down through FY18, and fire is locked down through FY19. So, don't really have any kind of surprises when it comes to, comes to union settlements for the next couple of years, which is, which is good news. One of the things we talked about before when we saw the FinCom draft point of view, if you recall that, that presentation, you know, I think we all generally agree we need a policy on reserves, and this is what we recommended back a couple of months ago, and we're still recommending it, that we would have a ceiling of 8% of current expenditures, a floor of 3%, and this is total town budget, just not, total municipal spending, I should say, not just the town budget. Any excess would be placed in the stabilization fund, and if you use this above, we would strive to have a reserve level between 2.7 and 7.1 million. This just gives you a sense, this is based on a report that DOR has put out through their monthly publication, City and Town, and it's a little hard to read, but we actually improved it from theirs because you couldn't tell what town was what. I don't think my pointer's working. But, anyway, the community in black is us. So, kind of the light blue are communities that have reserve, it's a percent of budget between 7 and 15%. The purple are over 15%. The kind of yellow is, I can't read it from here myself, but less than, less than 7%. And then, the orange is really like 2% or less. So, you can see in Eastern Mass, significantly, a lot of communities are like us, all in kind of the 7% to 15% range. And some of our neighbors, in fact, virtually all the neighbors that surround us, Concord, Maynard, Littleton, and Boxborough, all have, have reserves in excess of 15%. So, I know we've had a lot of discussion and some statements that we're one of the highest in the state, but I think this kind of proves that we're just kind of in the average where it comes to communities in Eastern Mass. Finally, I always like to close with a quote, and I've used this quote a lot over my career, the Finian Code. And, you know, it really talks about a sense of obligation, a sense of obligation for all of us that do public service. And the last line, I think, is what I really have always tried to use as part of my philosophy. We will transmit the city not only, not less, but greater, better, and more beautiful than it was transmitted to us. So, that is my budget presentation. I know you guys haven't really seen the detail. We'll be emailing out the link in the morning. It'll be available on, on the website as well. Anybody who would want a hard copy, they could let us know. We were kind of hoping we'd do it all electronically this year. We do have Budget Saturday on the 7th of January, and under the charter, the Board of Selectmen have to vote a budget 60 days prior to town meeting. Town meeting is April 3rd, so the Board has to vote a recommended budget by February 3rd. I've kind of taken the liberty of booking this room for January 30th. It's an off night for us, just in case we need it to discuss budget, because I know that there's a lot, a lot here to digest and understand, and I know we have to get through Budget Saturday as well. So, happy to answer any questions or anything the Board would like to know. Janet?
Yeah, I just have one question right now because I wasn't paying attention at the beginning. You said after you take out the $252,000 for the senior center and the $200,000 for the ambulance subsidy, the increase is 3.1, well, it's pi.
1.5.
What is it, what was it before? Were those still in? That's the part that I missed.
4.53.
Okay. That's all for now.
Yeah, Katie.
Steve, have you, have you guys asked other towns that already have the rail trails going through them if they have this emergency utility vehicles, if they have any in their towns at all?
I do not believe they do.
Okay. And so, I'm wondering, I guess, you know, if, if that's something maybe we could, you know, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm wondering if it's something that we could look into about whether that's, you know, more of a regional thing we could propose in some way. I know that's hard, you know, because one town would own it, but, you know, considering the rail trail goes through numerous, numerous towns, I think if we're talking either about the Brewsterman or the Assabett, it would be worth seeing if other towns might want to, you know, get in some sort of agreement to jointly purchase something and have a, you know, MOU or some sort of agreement where, you know, we're not only going to save the person who fell off their bike in Acton, but, you know, if they're in Westford or whatever. So, just maybe worth, worth looking into.
I'll talk to the chief about that and see what he can, can find out. I mean, one of the reasons this was suggested was some concerns because of access. For example, with the bridge going over 2A, this vehicle will be able to fit over that bridge if the need be, but I will talk to the chief about that.
Okay. And then I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit more about the ambulance fund and if there were the subsidy for the ambulance fund. I know we didn't do one last year, and it sounds like there was, you know, a dip in revenue this year. Is there any sort of related concerns to that with the switch over to ALS, or are we thinking that the, you know, sort of the revenues will go back up once we switch over?
Yeah. If Steve wants to chime in, that's fine, but I think probably what happened in FY16 is, is we've talked about when it relates to ALS, the fact that we're in Smurrah, if they respond to a call, they get the revenue. So, even though our basic ambulance may have showed up, we don't get any revenue from that. So, I'm surmising in FY16, there might have been proportionally more ALS calls, and that's one of the downturns. So, you know, the good news is that as we get into ALS, that issue goes away, and, you know, as we had our consultant show us, that we could get $300,000 to $350,000 more dollars a year in revenue. And in essence, that, and I think Peter made that point at town meeting when we talked about the union contract, that in essence, that increased revenue is paying for the, the union settlement, or at least the union settlement as it relates to the ALS. So, I think it was just one of those weird things because we're doing really well this year, it was just one of those weird, I don't know if Steve wants to add anything to that or not, but.
So, the long-range plan for the ambulance enterprise fund is to annually subsidize for 50% of the labor. That's how, that's how we developed it back in FY10. You know, for the '17 budget, due to, you know, monetary pressures, we cut the subsidy. Well, we cut the subsidy, unfortunately, at the same time when we had kind of a, a loss in revenue. You know, the fund balance is starting to dip down. The fund balance is at a point where we don't want it to go a lot lower. Now, we enter into ALS starting July 1, and, you know, we feel it's time to, you know, put the subsidy back in. The long-range plan that we hope we'll have out before Budget Saturday, even with the subsidy in there, you know, three or four years from now, you know, we're still in a decent spot, but we're not, you know, overly reserved. But, you know, again, the original intent of the ambulance enterprise fund was to fund eight staff members, but it was always the intent to subsidize half of that with a subsidy. So, we've always had a subsidy except for FY17 due to, you know, fiscal concerns. And, you know, between hopefully putting a subsidy back in in '18, and as Steve said, getting into the ALS market, that should allow us, allow that fund to get back into a good spot.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is just at the school budget presentation the other night, they were talking about how they've entered into, when Boxborough voted to leave the Minuteman district, there's a Minuteman program at the junior high school, and so that normally was funded through, actually, the two town budgets, but now that Boxborough has left, they're signing an agreement with the Minuteman school district, that that program will actually now be funded through the region's district and then kind of funneled back through assessments to Acton and Boxborough. So, it should be, I think, $190,000 off of our Minuteman assessment and off of ours. So, is that factored into this at all, or does that really come out of kind of our overall Minuteman assessment?
That's not been communicated to us yet.
Okay. Well, that's not great. Uh, well, that's not great. So, um, I think there might be a hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we can figure out where that comes out of, because that will be coming now through the school's assessment and not to town.
However, however, I, I did get a email from the, uh, principal of the middle school that there's at least one student, uh, in the middle school that wants to take a course outside the Minuteman District, I think in Neshoba Tech, for like veterinary assistance. So that means if it's an Acton student, we have to pay that tuition if that happens. So it's kind of a, might be not quite as much as one ninety if that's the case.
Oh, no, for that one case. Um, okay. Uh, and actually, we also have to pay to transport them, and that comes out of the, right, the town, not the schools.
Right.
But so, um, okay, yeah, just something to, to think about. They haven't formalized the, um, M O A yet, uh, because the Minuteman School District hadn't voted on it, but that is happening, is my understanding.
Because I had asked, uh, Superintendent Paquillan months and months ago, before all these towns started to devote to pull out, how that was gonna work, and he didn't really have an answer back then.
Yeah. So that's the answer that I understand.
Yeah, yeah. Franny?
Just, just, look, two things. Um, the library, I had to look out the window, 'cause you mentioned that the library has a flat roof.
Mm-hmm.
I wondered how big it is compared to the railroad lot and whether you should give the name to that, um, person. Have we looked into solarizing the library roof?
Uh, I don't know. Not, not that I'm aware. I don't think it's really that, I'm, I'm not sure how big it is.
Hmm, okay.
Compared to the railroad lot.
It seemed like that might be worth looking into. Also, um, with transportation, I keep wanting to have us look into, maybe for next year in the budget, um, getting more vehicles owned by us, because it will save us a lot of money on what we pay to transaction or whatever company is operating our transportation services, and including looking into an M V one, which is a small van. And I remember talking to the senior center in the past, and still, we're only taking two people on average, and the M V one is a little van. It's like a personal-sized van, but it can take one to three wheelchairs or something. If they wheel up from the side, they're really cool vehicles. And so I wanna look into the, they cost about forty-five thousand dollars, and it might be financially interesting for us to look into purchasing a vehicle sometimes.
Just, Steve, weren't, didn't Doug propose a lease? Lease for your vehicle?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to get back to you, Franny, but I do think we had talked to Doug about, uh, purchasing or leasing a van out of the enterprise fund for the, the transportation enterprise fund, but we'll, we'll have Doug report back, or we'll report back on Budget Saturday on that.
A couple of weeks ago, you guys mentioned something about, um, a three point three percent level, uh, or budget increase. Did we have the options for that, or are you planning on presenting that on Budget Saturday?
Well, that is the FinCom point of view, is the three point three percent.
Yeah, but I thought that, um, uh, at least it was my recollection, and maybe I'm just recalling incorrectly, that the Board, uh, also wanted to see what the cuts would be to get to that? Or maybe I'm just recalling incorrectly.
I, I don't recall that. I mean, I think that's something we'll put together for you guys before you vote a budget, if that's the direction you want.
Um, man, I mean, I was interested in seeing that, but I mean, it's possible that I just recall incorrectly, but that's what I, I remember.
Yeah, I think that I, I recall saying something about, you know, develop the budget, the optimal budget that you want, and then, but kind of keep in mind, you know, if we have to, because we're, we do have this gap that we're gonna have to deal with at A L G, uh, keep in mind areas that are potential for cuts, but I don't know if it would drop to the level of the point-of-view requirements, but, yeah. But I wasn't expecting that we would have it for this, 'cause this is just preliminary, and there's gonna be a lot of back and forth before we finalize the budget, so, but you're right, I, I was the one who brought it up.
On, on the bicycle, uh, connection between Assabett River and, I thought we had money in the grant on the community, in the Complete Streets Grant to, to study that.
Uh, that's not what Corey had told me. We'll double check that.
Okay.
'Cause we actually had it in last year's budget and we cut it, and one of the, the cuts that, you know, Franny and Shinsing were, you know, suggesting this year. So I think it's a little different than what's in the Complete, I think Complete Street Grant might be looking at bike lanes, but this is more signage and, and how do you efficiently get a bike, like, let's say, from the rail, the trail station to, to the Bruce Friedman, I think is what we're talking about, so.
Uh, do we know when Bruce Friedman is scheduled to open? Is it the fall of, of seventeen?
I believe it's possibly the summer of seventeen.
Summer, okay.
All right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can now open it up to citizens. Let's see, Mr. Lee has questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Leado. So during the, uh, presentation, there's a bonding cost of seventy thousand dollars. My question is, does that cover all the bindings for library roof, engine twenty-three, fair station, and then there's, uh, capital bonding for about two hundred thousand dollars?
Right. The way municipal borrowing works, that if we borrow the money after the beginning of the fiscal year, only interest is paid, so there would only be an interest payment in F Y eighteen, so that seventy thousand is just interest only, principal would kick in in F Y nineteen.
Okay, I don't see any other citizens with any questions, so thank you very much. Start of a long process. So the next item on the agenda is a, so, under Selectman's Business, a discussion of the West Acton Sewer Committee Charge. And Selectman Osman.
Well, I, I talked to people who have been working on this for many, many, several decades, um, to help come up with this draft charge, and so I'm looking forward to hearing what people's, um, feelings are about it. Um, the, do, maybe I'll just read the first paragraph. Um, we recently heard about Woodard and Curran's updated design basis report from August twelfth, twenty sixteen, and that communicated the conceptual sewer layout and the spectrum of engineering, regulatory, and costs requirements for the successful start to a West Acton Center sewer extension project. The West Acton Sewer Action Advisory Committee, described herein, is being established by the Board of Selectmen in response to that report, and according to the annual goals set by the Board of Selectmen, which over the last three years have consistently included sewer-ing. As discussed at the December fifth, twenty sixteen Board of Selectmen meeting, the focus of this committee is on the feasibility of sewer-ing and will be followed by future discussions of economic development opportunities. And so this is to develop and populate, um, as soon as we can, a committee to lead us through that process of looking at the feasibility and moving to the next step.
Overall, I think the, the charge looks pretty good. Um, I, the only comment that I have is, uh, I would maybe like a little bit more representation for, uh, West Acton residents. Um, that's the only, the only thing that I felt, but I mean, you did say that, um, you know, people can represent more than one, you know, group of those, and so, um, I think that, uh, it would be just essentially good to keep in mind that, uh, that, um, that, uh, I think that one, one rep, one person representing residents of West Acton, maybe two, depending on, you know, the Fort Ponbrook thing, um, may be a little bit light as far as how I feel, but, um, you know, that's my only real comment.
Can I respond to him? Peter?
Sure.
Um, I actually sort of agree. I mean, I originally had two, like, two from living within the district and two from West Acton or whatever. I, at first, I put in every possible interest group, and then it seemed like too many, and so that's why I, um, took it out, but I sort of agree with you.
No, I, I mean, like, I understand the pressures of, you know, getting everybody that, that has a, has skin in this game into the committee and having full representation, right? And so I think that, uh, it'd just be good to keep in mind that maybe if there's, you know, if there's a, a West Acton resident that represents, you know, one of these other interests as well, um, you know, might be good, and if they're interested, it might be good to, to, to prioritize them so that, you know, they can represent more point-of-view and we can have more people that actually live in or, in or around the proposed sewer area, um, you know, uh, to offer their opinions and, and be involved in the process.
So you mean, not necessarily within, right, where the sewers will meet, but just?
Yeah, exactly, like nearby as well, right? And I think that that's important.
Okay. Peter?
Well, Katie?
Um, so Franny, thanks for putting this together. I think in terms of making it an actual charge, I think this first part was useful for this sort of memo. I think, um, in terms of an actual charge, it would make sense if it started at sort of that second paragraph, the purpose of, um, I don't think you need all this kind of front part, it's not really part of a, a charge for committee. Um, and then I was, uh, a bit concerned about the statement that the membership of the committee is not fixed, particularly when we then later on say that there'll be seven members and two associate members. So I think we should probably, I would recommend taking that out and just saying upfront that there'll be seven members and, and two associate members. Um, and then, um, I'm wondering about how active the Economic Development Committee currently is, 'cause my understanding is that they're down to very few members at this point, and so I don't know if it makes sense to have a representative from the E D C, um, specifically on there. Um, and I think you could put something in here, I like the idea of encouraging, uh, you know, many of these members to, to be, um, uh, you know, residents of West Acton, and so we could just sort of put in here direction for the, um, volunteer coordinating committee, that, you know, preference should be given to residents of West Acton, and, um, that would sort of, uh, address that concern. Um, and then I thought that the timeline was, um, fairly aggressive in terms of reporting its findings, Board of Selectmen, that anticipates a presentation at the fall special town meeting, um, just considering how long it generally takes to actually approve this charge and then get members of the committee and then, um, you know, actually start to meet, um, and then have something for a fall town meeting, you know, which you would have to present to the Board in late summer. Um, it's aggressive, it's aggressive, I'm just.
Maybe we could say it's, uh, an upcoming town meeting instead of.
Yeah, I think that's probably just more, more realistic, to be honest, about when, when this is actually, uh, something's gonna happen. Again, I, I applaud your ambition, but, um...
That's what we sort of said, you know, originally, when Woodard and Curran were here, we said, oh, they wanted to go to spring, and so we...
Yeah, well, that's right, yeah.
And suggested, you know, slow down a little, so then we changed it to fall, but...
Yeah, yeah, maybe just say upcoming, just to kind of recognize the time it takes to do, to do a lot of this, especially if we wanna have public hearings, you run into summer and, you know, things like that, so.
Yeah.
But those are just my suggestions.
To respond to Katie's comment about the E D C, uh, the E D C is still, uh, undergoing restructuring. Doug Tyndall resigned recently, and so we need to, um, and so, uh, you know, that came up, and we need to figure out exactly how we're gonna structure ourselves, um, you know, 'cause we had assumed that, that wasn't happening. Um, so, uh, if you were to add a member of the E D C, which I think is fine, uh, I would do it as an associate member, uh, because at the moment, the E D C has, um, that as well as a couple of other things on its plate that it's handling. But I mean, definitely, the E D C will, is taking, will take interest in, in, in this.
You know, there were other committees that wanted to have input. We could, uh, and I was thinking we would make sure to communicate with those committees, things like, um, the Capital Planning Committee and...
Yeah.
And Historic Commission, and there are different groups that we didn't include. We could just take that requirement, 'cause we have more requirements here than there are members.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause the idea was to fill as many, that's what the not fixed sort of meant, is that it was, um, where hopefully people would match more than one of these, and so that, so we could take E D C out of there if you want, it would maybe, um, and that could sort of go in the same level as...
Well, I mean, I think it's useful to have a representative of the business community in any way, shape, or form, whether that's an E D C representative or, you know, um, someone who actually owns a business in the area. Um, it's obviously as a business district, right? Um, the, the sewer primarily covers the business district and the schools, um, and so it, it, obviously their interests are, are very, very relevant to, to, to this project, and so I think that it's important to maintain that influence in the committee, but, um, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be an E D C member, it could easily be a business owner, I think.
So maybe that would mean we'd end up with two people from the business community rather than one from the business or...
Well, I mean, you know, I think one is enough. I think one or, one or two is fine either way. Um, you know, I don't really, I don't really think, as long as they're represented and they can make themselves heard, I think, I think that's, that's, that, that's sufficient going forward.
Why don't we keep representation from the West Acton business community, is that's a bit more stable at this point, take out the E D C and recognize again that it's a committee that will consult with other people and it's an open meeting.
Yes.
Um, I think it's easy, you know, again, I just thinking about the V C C and what they're gonna have to deal with when they get this charge, is that it might be easier to actually get this down to seven, you know, or nine members, um, because otherwise they're gonna be, if they don't get people, that kind of overlap, and then you have a committee, you know, a charge that says they should have people from all of these committees, but it can only be seven people, you run, you start to run into concerns for them, so, um, just in case there's not overlap. I understand it's desirable, but it might not happen.
But it could be that we could collapse the existing Fort Ponbrook Sewer District and experience on a past Acton Sewer Committee. It could be an or, you know, it could be representation from that district or...
Or past.
Experience on a past.
That sounds good.
People who care, people who know, are familiar with sewer-ing our town, that's really what those comprise.
I think that the easy way to, to maintain sort of the, the list is just to say that, you know, the following, um, area, areas or people would have, you know, have good interest at stake, and just list sort of, you know, these are the, these are the influences that we want, you know, score as many of these as possible. Um, you know, I, I think it's better to have, um, a larger list of, you know, just sort of, just a more comprehensive list of, of influences that we want to, um, that we want to, to see, you know, interests we want represented. Um, you know, I, obviously, uh, from a practical standpoint, we're not gonna achieve representation of all of these interests, but, um, when considering, you know, the people who are going to make up this committee, representing as many of those interests as possible, I think is, is, is a good thing, so.
So usually when you're talking about members of another committee, it's, it's helpful to say whether or not they should be, you know, whether a committee must include a member from another committee or not. So I think we need to make clear when we're talking about specific other committees in town, whether there has to be a member that's from the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, et cetera. Um, and then these other ones that are sort of looser could say, you know, we recommend they also, the committee also includes blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I have seen sort of suggested prerequisites for people, but just as suggested prerequisites, but so are you saying that we would word it differently? The part that says representation from the schools, well, actually, the schools was specifically written schools, so it could be staff or, um, is it committee?
Yeah, I mean, again, I just think when you're talking about whether you wanna have representatives from another specific committee, it's a bit different than when you're talking about sort of broader communities, and so I think you wanna be clear that it has to include a member of the Board of Selectmen, um, and it has to include, you know, whatever.
You have to set priorities, because, because otherwise, you know, you, you might end up with a, a bunch of people who represent interests that maybe aren't the most important ones. I mean, I think you really need to flag that, as Katie says, the school committee ought to be involved in some fashion, Board of Selectmen has to be involved. I think FinCom, given that you're not gonna include the Capitol Committee Rep, I mean, there's, or there has to be somebody who has experience with sewer finance, you know, uh, unless you're planning to also have the Finance Department show up and, and, you know, kind of take, walk everybody through bonding and all that. It would be helpful in that case to have somebody not only with prior experience on the Sewer Committee, 'cause there are all kinds of people, um, but to have somebody, you know, it, whether it's the Finance or somebody on FinCom who does have experience with the sewer-ing, but to have somebody who has some experience with the prior sewer-ing efforts, uh...
Are you saying, I mean, I was picturing this required, when it said, maybe, when it said, oh, sorry. When it said representation from the Finance Committee, I thought that that meant we should have a member from the Finance Committee.
Right, so I think you just have to be clear that that's a requirement versus, yeah, versus the nice to have.
Because otherwise, it sort of looks as if, okay, representation, and then you talk about... about experience, and obviously, you're not necessarily, or you are requiring that. You know, somebody, at least one person has to have.
Yeah, at least one person should be from the schools.
I mean, I think, I think that, you know, you need to make clear who, which little interest groups have to be represented.
I, I thought all of these things had to be represented.
And then fields, but, you know, I think, I think it's going to be, it's going to be tough for VCC to sort of take a melange of all these, you know, keep track of who, you know, okay, we want, we want ideally have, would like one person who represents at least three of these values, you know, to make life easier. But, you know, because otherwise, they're going to have to interview a whole slew of people to come up with seven who kind of represent all of these interests.
Well, actually, we had nine, including the associates, so I was.
Well, the, the two associates, yeah, it's.
Well, associates are there and can vote.
But they're, they're associates for a reason. I mean, it's just, you, you really want to have the seven voting members be.
So do you think we should have nine voting members? I mean, I, or, I mean, what, what would you like to do about the fact that there are nine things here that are important?
Well, I think, as Katie said, I think the background paragraph probably you don't need. And if I, if you were to insist on including that, I would delete the reference to economic development opportunities, because you've just said that the focus is going to be on the feasibility of sewer-ing. But, but just start, you know, you can change the introduction, but then start with, there will be seven members and two associates, and the following, you know. And then, and then when you get into the disciplines, then it's, yeah, ideally, one of the, the above representatives should have, you know, at least one of them should have experience with, you know, in these fields. And if you have more than those two fields, but I would, I would say that maybe separate that out so that, because you want representatives, you're talking about representatives, and then you're talking about professional experience, and those are two separate things. So, so, so people will not sort of blend them all together and think you have to have two more members with those disciplines. Just say that, you know, you want the above representatives to include somebody who's got civil engineering and past experience. But I would, I would want to also focus the Sewer Committee experience a little bit more on the things that, well, Doug would know, the kinds of, because there were, there are people who are on Sewer Committee who may not be very helpful, and there are others, you know, I know, I, you and I know people that were on Sewer Committees who would be useful, because they, they have a lot of depth of knowledge. But there are other people you might not, not everybody was equally useful, I don't think, but.
And I have heard interest from people who have been on it in the past, or, or recommendations of people who are on it that I should reach out to.
You've got a staff member assigned here also, so that, that's been an issue with boards in the past. I haven't been able to get staff members. I do agree that this one is, is important enough to try to assign some staff members. I talked to Steve. He was, you know, possibly Paul from Engineering is available, might be available. I know Corey is stretched. A lot of other staff in the Planning Department is stretched, so you have to identify some person to do that. Is Woodard and, Woodward and Curran, is it Woodward? Woodard and Curran? Does the scope of their services include helping this committee, or providing information, or responding to questions as they go along, or?
Well, we don't have a, a scope for this next phase yet, so that's something we'd have to talk to them about. I mean, their normal contract is basically to run the, the plant and the sewer system.
Their, their normal contract's based on, on maintaining our current system, giving us this feasibility study, and that kind of ended their, their services at that point.
Right, because it was just a preliminary feasibility study.
Yeah, you might want to consider exploring that possibility. Would seem to me that having the engineers involved, for instance, in designing the, or picking the area, I assume you're going to look at what the area that the sewer, sewer district would encompass is going to be. They'd be the people you'd have to really talk to, wouldn't they?
Yeah, Doug, Hallie seemed to think that Paul would be, Paul Campbell would be a good person to be on it. But if, I mean, we, we don't have the ability as a committee to say, oh, we would like to have support from this consulting company. So how does that work? I mean, at what point does it have to get into the budget to be able to get help from the consulting company?
Well, I guess we'd need a scope of work first. I, I think Corey and Paul need to get that from Woodward and Curran and figure out what that scope would be.
Franny, I think you could get to the seven members if you said sort of the membership of the committee is, you know, seven full members and two associates must include someone from the regional schools, someone from the Board of Selectmen, someone from the Finance Committee, someone from the Planning Board, although that might be tough, given their membership concerns, someone from the West Acton business community, and a resident, and somebody has to be a resident of the proposed district. And then you can have, you know, just the, that's six, but that's sort of six requirements that you have to have. And then you can say other members, or those members should also, you know, would prefer if they included someone from the existing sewer districts, you know, that has past experience on the committee, and that has expertise in civil engineering or a related field, I think, would kind of then get you to those must-includes versus nice-to-haves and still keep you. That, that gives the VCC good direction and isn't going to leave them going, oh crap, how do we get, you know, seven people to fit 20 categories? And, you know, what if one person leaves and now there's four that they don't meet anymore? But, yeah.
And what about broaden, broader Acton citizen?
Yeah. I mean, that, well, that would probably be that seventh, and the two associates would be, you know, and, and those people ideally would have the past experience, would have the, be, you know, from the existing district, you know, would have maybe civil engineering kind of background. So it just gives you that bit, bit more flexibility, because I, you know, I think there's a lot of ideals of who we'd like to have, but then there's reality of who has time to do this and, you know, and a willingness to serve, so.
So, do we need to have you redraft this, incorporating all these ideas?
Yeah, I can incorporate them all and bring them to our next meeting.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. First item on the consent agenda is the request to dispose of obsolete materials from the Acton Memorial Library. Number five, request to dispose of surplus and obsolete equipment from Information Technology. Number six is a committee appointment of Allison Cazaza, Historic District Commission. Number seven, waiver of fees Recreation Department Relay for Life.
Hold, that's very minor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Number eight, request extension of operating hours, December 31, 2016, True West. Number nine, an Eagle Scout Court of Honor, Michael Gekowitz and Justin Vingerhout, January 21, 2017, Selectman Green assigned. And number 10 is the purchase and sale agreement for 53 River Street. Franny?
Oh, very, there was just a typo in the Relay for Life. I almost didn't mention it. It had the 2015 date in the, or, or just the wrong year in the documentation of it. I just thought we should let them know that in their whole description of the event, so.
Okay.
And can I ask real quick? Is anybody, the 21st is the schools' Budget Saturday, which traditionally I go to. Is anybody not planning to attend to that, that would be available to do the Court of Honor?
I'll switch with you.
Okay, thank you.
That's the weekend of the MMA. Is that the 21st Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay. The MMA.
Saturday, that's the women's market.
All right. Okay. You're going to take that?
I'll, I'll take it if someone else takes the 27th.
December 27?
Yeah.
I'm going to be traveling, so. Anybody else?
It's Tuesday.
December 27?
It is a Tuesday.
Is it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm around because, you know, I have no life, but I'm happy to take Katie's if, if someone's.
I mean, I can change the school.
No, I mean, we, we can do a three-way swap.
I think it's, I just have somebody relatives visiting and I.
No, it's all right. I'll take it. It's fine, I'll take it. I'll take it.
You know, talk to me.
I'll take it.
I mean, as, as the 27th approaches, we can.
All right. So can we have a motion to accept the consent agenda from items four through 10?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. That completes our business this evening, so we need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.